Ben Tippett, Senior Pastor of Victory Christian Fellowship, followed by Clash to the Flag by Commissioner Norwood. We all please stand at this time. Let us pray. Our Heavenly Father, we are grateful indeed for all of your many blessings. We thank you for our city commissioners and leaders of our city. We ask for your guidance and your will to be done as they seek to lead us. We pray this all in the name of Jesus Christ, our Lord and Savior. Amen.
Amen. Please join me in our pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Hill?
Here.
Vice Mayor Brown, Redmond. Mr. Borum?
Present.
Mr. Campbell?
Present.
Mr. Norwood?
Present.
One member of the President and Senator Porter have a call.
Thank you. Does everyone have an opportunity to look at the minutes from the March 24th meeting? Just a moment, a second on the floor. All the papers say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to our public recognition section. First proclamation reads, whereas each year in Florida, lives are endangered, money and time are wasted, and properties destroyed because people fail to locate underground facilities before beginning excavation or demolition. Whereas Call Sunshine, a one-call center that no advice participating utility agencies of all plans to engage in excavation or demolition is a free service to professional contractors as well as homeowners digging in their yard. And whereas the one-call center provides a toll-free number to reduce damages to underground utility facilities, thereby preventing injury to persons and damage to property as well as reducing the loss of utility service to the public and the loss of time and money to both contractors and utilities. And whereas in addition to saving time and money, the one-call system helps excavators comply with the same rules and regulations of the construction industry. And whereas anyone planning any type of excavation or demolition should notify Call Sunshine, and if a line must be located, personnel will be sent to mark the location of the line at no cost to the inquiry party. Now therefore, I tarrel Hill Mayor of the City of Palatka, together with the members of the Palatka City Commission, hereby proclaim the month of April 2016 as Call Before You Dig Month in the City of Palatka, and urge all citizens and contractors to use the Call Sunshine one-call center located underground facilities before beginning excavation or demolition, in addition to all other appropriate safety precautions. And witness whereof, I appear unto set and cause my hand to be fixed to seal the City of Palatka on this fourteenth day of April in the year of our Lord 2016, Tarrel Hill Mayor, Commissioners Mayor Lawson Brown, Rufus Borum, Justin Campbell, and James Norwood, Jr.
Mayor? I sure do. I want to get the first real quick, but that's okay. Make me right here in front of the City of Palatka. Because we're going to broadcast you guys all over our newsletter and website and Facebook.
One, two, three.
All right, I'd just like to thank the Commission for your leadership and the example that the City of Palatka has shown in making April as National Safe Digging Month in the following suit here in Florida. Historically, the Governor has always proclaimed Florida as Safe Digging Month as well, and we just really love the public awareness and the broadcast throughout in helping make Florida the safest place to dig. So we really appreciate y'all's help.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we'll have St. John's River Water Management District. Your representative for water management, please come forward this time. This is for our Water Conservation Month. This proclamation reads, whereas water is a basic and essential need of every living creature, clean and sustainable water resources are vital to Florida's environment, economy, and quality of life. More than 90 percent of Florida's drinking water is supplied by underlying aquifers. And our quality of life and the economy depends upon a reliable, clean, and available supply of water and healthy environment. And whereas the St. John's River Water Management District is working with the State of Florida, other water management districts, local governments, and water supply utilities to increase awareness about the importance of water conservation and to increase efforts to conserve water. And whereas the City of Palatka has joined St. John's River Water Management District in encouraging and supporting water conservation throughout its water supply planning process, coordination of education programs, special events, government funding programs, technical assistance, and regulatory programs. And whereas all water users, including residential, commercial, industrial, agricultural, and institutional, hospitality, private citizens, and others can make positive contributions to reduce water use and protect Florida's water resources. Whereas the St. John's River Water Management District, City of Palatka, and other local government utility businesses, agricultural, environmental organizations, and other parties within interest in water use are developing a comprehensive and long-term water conservation program to instill a lasting culture of conservation in our communities. And whereas the Governor and the Cabinet of the State of Florida are designating April as Florida's Water Conservation Month to encourage Floridians to conserve the state's precious water resources. Now therefore, I tarrel Hill Mayor of the City of Palatka, together with the members of the Palatka City Commission, hereby proclaim the month of April 2016 as Water Conservation Month in the City of Palatka, and I call upon each resident, visitor, and business to protect our precious resource by practicing water conservation measures and becoming more aware of the need to conserve water. And witness whereof, I appear to set my hand and cause to be affixed to seal the City of Palatka, Florida on this fourteenth day of April in the year of our Lord 2016, Tarrel Hill Mayor, Commissioners Mayor Lawson Brown, Rufus Borum, Justin Campbell, James Norwood, Jr.
Thank you for adopting this proclamation. Water conservation is so important to all citizens of Florida, and St. John's River Water Management District is honored to join with the commitment of the City of Palatka. Thank you.
Our final proclamation is for countywide cleanup on May 21st. Here we have our representatives from Putnam Beautiful here. It's Chief Shaw around. As Chief Shaw comes forward, we'll read this proclamation. Whereas Palatka Pride is a locally based grassroots movement championed by the City of Palatka Commission, police, code enforcement, and public work staff that has brought public and private sectors together to develop and promote citywide cleanliness, ethic through monthly organized and targeted trash collection, beautification, and renewal drives. And whereas Keep Putnam Beautiful, the local affiliate of Keep America Beautiful, is an organization that envisions work to inspire and educate people to take action every day to improve and beautify their community environment, and the visions of Putnam County where every community is a clean, green, and beautiful place to live. And whereas both Keep Putnam Beautiful and Palatka Pride are part together to promote programs that engage individuals through coordinating events and programs to renew parks, trails, and recreation areas, clean shorelines and waterways, remove litter and debris, reduce waste, and increase recycling, and plant trees, flowers, and community gardens in order to inspire a new generation of community stewards who would take greater responsibility for improving their community's environment. And whereas, over a one-year period ending November 2015, Palatka Pride and Keep Putnam Beautiful partnered with local volunteers to pick up over 17,000 pounds of trash through the efforts of 1,310 volunteers with 3,685 volunteer hours. Since December 2015, they picked up an additional 52,640 pounds of trash with 60 groups participating in cleanups, giving an additional 725 volunteer hours. And whereas Palatka Pride and Keep Putnam Beautiful are expanding their area of concern to cover the entirety of Putnam County by organizing county, municipal, business, and civic organizations to come together to support and donate resources to volunteers to participate in a countywide cleanup on May 21st, 2016. Now therefore, I tarrel Hill Mayor of the City of Palatka, together with the members of the Palatka City Commission, do hereby proclaim May 21st, 2016 as Putnam Pride Countywide Cleanup Day in the City of Palatka, and I call upon Putnam County's Board of County Commissioners, the City of Preston City, and in Alakin, the towns of Pomona Park, and We lacka to issue a light proclamation urging its citizens to encourage organizations, businesses, and citizens to do their part to donate time, money, resources, or talent, and otherwise participate in this event to make Putnam County a more beautiful place to live, work, and play. And witness whereof, I appear to set my hand and cause to be affixed to seal the City of Palatka, Florida on this fourteenth day of April in the year of our Lord 2016, Tarrel Hill Mayor, Mayor Lawson Brown, Justin Campbell, Rufus Borum, James Norwood, Jr., Commissioners.
Through cooperations and partnerships with certain individuals and organizations through Putnam County, I've done a lot with Palatka Pride when we've asked that more individuals come out, volunteers, to help us continue to clean up. Our next cleanup is going to be on the 23rd. We're asking that you come out and help us clean up our old street area. We are meeting and the... We are meeting at City Hall for the cleanup for the 23rd, and then we have our, again, countywide cleanups is going to be on May 21st. We ask that you grab a friend, come out, assist with us, and volunteer, and help us to make Putnam County beautiful.
Just to follow up a little bit on the countywide cleanup, as you heard, we collected over 17,000 pounds of trash within a one-year period. And not only that, and that just wasn't through volunteers, that was commissioners getting out along with volunteers, along with our staff, along with citizens. We had parents that would stop by and see what we were doing and bring their kids and just drop them off, but it's a collective effort for Palatka Pride. The vision expanded, and I had this crazy aberration that we would have over 500 volunteers involved in a countywide cleanup. We had several county commissioners who came on board along with Keep Putnam Beautiful, and we've organized what we believe is going to be the largest cleanup in this county's history, but it's an opportunity for us all to collectively take the same initiative in making our county appealing to everyone who lives here, creating a different culture, and also providing a welcoming atmosphere for those who travel through here. And so that's one of the things that we're looking to do. If you're interested in being a part of that, you can go to the city's webpage, we'll have a link on there, to Keep Putnam Beautiful. You can do online sign-ups, or you can contact staff at the Police Department through code enforcement, and we'll make sure that we get your name in place and we'll assign you to the proper zone. But May 21st should be a great day for our great Putnam cleanup. We had a contest for the cleanup, got a student from over in Preston City, Middleton Bernie Elementary School, who came up with the concept and the tagline, which is Clean It Up, Green It Up. And so there's a prize for that student coming up with the tagline, and we're going to make sure we push forward with what we have. Now we'll move on to our public comments. Public comments will be limited to three minutes, no action will be taken on the topics of discussion. Is there anyone here for public comment? Mr. Zinni Best?
Yes, sir.
Come forward. Give your name and address.
Excuse me. My name is Mr. Best. I live in 200 Hayes Drive in Alachua, Florida. It's a pleasure to be here with those fine people today, and thank you for your support and having me speak. I'm coming here to talk about three items. The homeless coalition, the PAL boxing association, and then the mental health system that we have established here. Let me start with the mental health system. The first and foremost is there are a lot of people that have mental illness. The most fascinating thing about mental illness is that everyone else, most of them's wrong with you, but you won't. And as far as our leaders are concerned, it's important for us to recognize that more money is needed, more facilities, in my case, is needed. We're trying to open a psychosocial vocational rehabilitation center, which means if you have, whatever item goes with mental illness, you can join this club, and we'll make sure you get everything that you need to help you along your way to become a better citizen again. I meant so, my recovery started in a clubhouse, clubhouse to go around the world, around the world. I went back to work because I had a Nazi out there and I was drunk, and they said, "Your diagnosis with mental illness." Mental illness is hard to describe yourself that you have one, or it's hard to accept with each and every individual. We need a clubhouse here desperately to make sure that people with mental health issues get the resources that are available to them. Most of us walk around the streets with no help, with no... It's like we don't see them. People are sick. People need help, and the help is here within, we have the agencies to help them, but they don't know that they're there.
Fifty seconds.
And the agencies that are there are closed mouth. We need a, what I'm asking the county floor and the City of Palatka floor is a freestanding clubhouse, a clubhouse that is not fumbled through student marching group, or not fumbled through any mental health agency. We start our own clubhouse, I've been talking about this over six years now. I've been in front of all kinds of commissions and people, and one of the most dramatic, and this is going to end this, that mental health issue. One of the more dramatic things that I've heard was, I stood up, a mental health community board meeting, and I said, "Most of our people here that have mental illness are, they live in the streets." One of the commissioners stood up and said, "Some of them like to live in the woods." Come on. Moving on.
You've got 10 seconds, Mr. Best.
Okay, can I move on to my next one?
No, you don't get three minutes for each topic. You get three minutes.
Okay, boxing.
I'm going to give you 30 seconds, the rest of my...
Okay, boxing. PAL boxing in Palatka is not here. Why?
It's a county-run program.
It's a government-run program.
Okay, it's run by the county. The county actually runs the boxing program for Pat.
Okay, we don't have the money, there's need for insurance. I've spoken to Mr. Todd. The money for insurance is not there for the kids, and these boxing programs, I know boxers from around the country. I could bring him his professional champions, I could bring him here to our celebrations. I could have him come here to the grand fest to always, to show people that it does work if you give it a chance.
Okay. You can get with the county, they've got the program in place, they've got a boxing ring, and you can get with them, and they've got funding. Okay?
Thank you, sir.
Have a good day. Mr. Spels.
My name is David Spels. I live at 519 Trail Academy. I was at the dentist's office today, and I picked up a paper, and I saw about this alcohol situation. We supposedly have selected the brightest minds in Putnam County, and I can't see how it would be such a hard decision to be fair in coming up with a solution as far as alcohol in Putnam County. Now, if you had two liquor stores and a street ran between the county and the city, how can you define whether an individual is going to step across the street into the county and buy whiskey and go back into the city? You're not being fair to the stores in the city. You need to come up with one guideline. Be fair with it, it's either open up after 12 o'clock, city and county, or open up all day for everybody. I mean, the game you're playing now, that's to go to a voice system of a special interest. Now, if you're going to do it right, do it right. Be fair to everybody, because you're not being fair to that guy in the city and the county can sell his. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here for public comment? Seeing none, we'll close public comment. Moving on to item three of the agenda, consent agenda. Item A, adopt resolution number 2016-12-25, authorizing the execution of St. John's River Water Management District fiscal year 2016 cost share grant for Booker Park Regional Stormwater Pond Project. B, adopt resolution number 2016-12-26, authorizing execution of St. John's River Water Management District fiscal year 2016 cost share grant for the Palatka wastewater facility replanning water project. C, adopt resolution number 2016-12-27, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute and attest a construction agreement with TB Landmark Construction for the replacement of the fluent structure located at Moody Road and St. John's Avenue lift station. D, adopt resolution number 2016-12-28, authorizing execution of the contract for professional services with Council Bay Design Studio LLC for playground design associated with Firdapp Project Number 816072, grant agreement for riverfront park phase one. E, adopt resolution number 2016-12-29, authorizing the elimination of the code enforcement fines, liens, and fees levy against 1506 Napoleon Street. F, adopt Eddie M. Wilson to the Palatka Planning Board for the remainder of a three-year term to expire on December 31st, 2016. G, grant permission to exceed allowable noise levels for special events permit number 16-28, Arts Council Spring and Summer Concert Series, Saturday, April 23rd, 2016, Saturday, May 14, 2016, Saturday, June 4th, 2016, Friday, June 17th, 2016, Monday, July 4th, 2016, including permission to serve alcoholic beverages at the riverfront from 3:00 p.m. until 10:00 p.m. July 4th only, July 30th, 2016, and Saturday, April, August 13, 2016. All concerts except the 4th of July shall occur between 5:00 p.m. until 9:00 p.m. Arts Council of Greater Palatka, Denise A. Page. Are there any items on the consent agenda that you wish to have removed? Second. There's a motion on the floor in a second by Commissioner Neil Campbell. Question's been called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item number four, appointment of Palatka Housing Authority Board, three-year term to expire April 14th, 2019, two applicants, Marshall Fulgham, Darrell W. Futch. There's also, we just recently received a third application from Will Jones as it relates to the application for the Palatka Housing Authority Board. In light of the fact that we've got additional interest in this, I would suggest that we extend the application period until our next meeting and bring this vote back unless the Commission has some other pleasure. So move to the table until our next meeting. And then we're going to extend the application period as well.
Yes. Yes.
Second. There's a motion on the floor in a second. Is there any discussion?
Question.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item five, public hearing and resolutions, the annual fire assessment. Item A, public hearing on non-advalorem fire assessment, fire service assessment fiscal years 16 and 17. B, annual check and resolution for fire service assessments fiscal year 16 through 17 based on the same rate that exempt property direction given by the City Commission fiscal year 15 through 16. Resolution, I'm sorry. Yes.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Palatka, Florida approving the fiscal year 2016, 2017 non-advalorem assessment role for fire protection services, facilities, and programs, addressing the collection of an amount equivalent to unpaid fire service assessments, if any, directing certification of the assessment role and collection pursuant to the Uniform Assessment Collection Act, confirming required statutory notice and imposing and levying fire service assessments, providing directions and providing an effective date.
So move, there's a motion on the floor in a second. In a second, by Commissioner Campbell. We're now looking at the floor for public hearing. Sharon Kilgore? Sharon Kilgore? Please come forward. Name and address, please, please.
Yes, my name is Sharon Kilgore, 200 James Street, Palatka Park. This is my first time ever attending any of your meetings, so if you're going to be having these fire taxes, you'll see me probably quite often.
With fire assessment?
Yes. Anyway, I was bringing it to, trying to bring it to your attention, that we're senior citizens to try to lower the taxes for 16 and 17. I think the 15 year, bail them out from all the money they've got from the river all the way out to the end of the city, and so I don't think that they need as much money for 16 and 17. Also, we need to have a letter state for the monthly payments. I don't think these need to be added to your regular taxes. It makes your mortgage go up. I know it does that to a lot of other people, that you have to send it to the bank, and you pay your thing to the bank, so that's all I have to say. Just don't add it to your regular taxes and send out monthly bills, and then we can break it down and pay for it back. When you add it on top of the taxes we already pay, that we have to pay into our bank, it makes it go up a lot. I'm trying to keep my mortgage low so I can afford the mortgage. Thank you.
Thank you. George Monkhaus.
Well, here we are again, a year later.
You said your name and address for us, please.
Yes, sir. George Monkhaus, on the 422th East 15th Street, right next to the ravines.
Yes, sir.
Okay, start from the top. Last year, we had a meeting in which it was put out, if I remember correctly, that it's going to start out at X amount of dollars, and then the following year, it's going to be reduced. Okay? That was what was put out in the meeting. I'm fine with that. I'd just like to see it reduced. I think an additional $450 a year, non-advalorem tax, regardless of what you want to call it, is still a tax. Okay? And I don't like taxes, and I'm not supposed to pay taxes. Okay? Totally disabled American better. Okay? And by state law, I'm not required to pay taxes. Now, the other hand, my point is, what's to stop you from coming up with another non-advalorem tax? And another one? Every time your budget gets out of line. That's not cool. And I get stuck paying them. Okay? Now, I can afford to pay what I pay, but I asked for a reduced rate for disabled people last year. That didn't carry no weight with anybody, and that's fine. But y'all did say that the rate was going to be reduced this year, so I don't expect to get a $450 bill this year. Okay? If I do, I'll be back next year, and I'll be a little bit hot. Thank you.
Ms. Kitchens.
I'm Libra Kitchens, 1027 Young 12th Street.
I'm Lady Kitchens, ten twenty-seven, Zion twelve straight. You all know I'm gonna get this fire service fee, which is a tax, isn't it, Judge? And TB Store said a tax, but any of the names still a tax, however, it is what it is. And what I would like to ask you tonight is, please do not put this on the ad valorem tax bill. Let the city keep on sending out the bills and doing the collection. That way, it gives the citizens some degree of protection and like one of the other people said, it will increase their mortgage payments. So, please do not put this on the ad valorem tax bill, and again, I'm against it, thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone else here for public comment? Seeing no one else here for public hearing, I'm sorry. We'll close public hearing at this time. Is there any discussion from the commission?
I'd like to say something. I was talking to Mr. Mahaffey, who's our tax collector, and he said if you put it on the tax bill, that there are other fees that go along with it. Has anybody talked to us about that?
I think the city manager and also Mr. Reynolds have, and along with Mr. Lawson, have had extensive communication as it relates to what happens when the fire assessment fees go on the tax bill. They've actually had quite a few educational sessions as it relates to that, providing certain informations to people about the process. So, I think that that has been explored, it's been explored at length. And if anybody else wants anything, you can. Is there any other comments?
I mean, there is a error, I guess, on page eleven, the date.
Why don't you just say that, please?
About fifteen, two thousand sixteen.
Please, what, yes.
Page eleven. And I guess I would like to say also, while we're turning that page, I am concerned about individual mortgages being tied to it, because when you go and take out a mortgage, you take out a mortgage at a set rate. And I know as you get older, and you're senior citizens especially, you don't have the opportunity a lot of times, based on your income, to make the adjustments and still live the quality of life that you probably desire to live once before you retire as well. So, that is a concern, because I do know they set up escrows for those accounts and that's tied to your mortgage payments as well. So, that, you know, that particular comment was a valid comment.
But I guess my question, Commissioner, would be, if you raise the, if you raise the millet rate as it had been done historically, the same thing happens. And there wasn't much consideration for increasing the millet rate over the years and having the same communication as it relates to a monthly mortgage payment. The other, the flip side of the equation is, if we reduce, if we reduce our millet rate when we set our millet rate this year, if we reduce it further and we have a baseline reduction from the implementation of the fire assessment fee and mortgages go down, are we gonna have complaints because people are gonna pay less for the mortgage? That's the question, because right now, we're at six point nine nine. Based upon that, if we reduce the mortgage, if we reduce our millet rate further and we get to a baseline reduction, then mortgage payments are going down. So, are we gonna have a complaint that people are paying less and they gotta reprieve? And so, at that point, that's the next question for me.
No, you're gonna have it stayed, they'd be excited at that point.
Well, sir, you're not, right now, it's a conversation between the commission, you've already had your public, you've already had your time during public hearing. And so, that's my question. And I guess, if we're saying, the purpose of the fire assessment fee was to try to provide a certain level of reprieve for our citizens because we had the eleventh highest millet rate out of any municipality in the state of Florida. What we were able to do off of that, when we were able to reduce the millet rate immediately from nine point one seven four to six point nine nine, we're within, we're within dollars of reaching our anticipated goal of compliance with the fire fee for this year, which puts us in a position where the consideration of the reduction becomes a very plausible thing. And so, if that happens, then we're in a position where we can look to try to provide additional relief, which again, puts people in a more positive situation than they did in two thousand fifteen.
And, Mr. Mayor, I understand exactly what you're saying, but also, and I understand also, we have to have a method of collection, you know, as well. And I guess my question is, is there any way that we can somewhat, I guess, with the lack of a better term, ease the burden for those individuals that, that this, that the assessment, along with the ad valorem taxes tied to their mortgage? And I don't know that question, I'm not an attorney, I don't know how that's basically done, that's my question.
The answer is, there's an opportunity to make payment arrangements even as it relates to ad valorem taxes quarterly basis, but also, the additional reduction in millet provides that same ease.
But sometimes when you look at the taxes, man, it doesn't look like.
It doesn't look like that when every other entity is still raising their taxes and we're lowering our millet rate.
But I wanna ask, is this, is it gonna be where another year, we can go and look at what formula we took to put how much it would be on it and maybe to maybe reduce the fire fee some?
Every year, you have an opportunity to look at that. You, it's, the fire, the fire fee isn't something that's not going to be looked at on an annual basis. It's on an annual basis, you make a determination if you're gonna have it, you make a determin, you have the opportunity to set your rates, you have an opportunity to set your millet rate.
Okay, so you're saying we get ready to set our millet rate now if we're in where we think near, where we think we wanna be, would we be able to?
Reduce it.
Yeah.
Yes, we, every year, we have the opportunity to reduce the millet rate regardless of whether we have a fire fee or not.
Well, I know that with millet, but I mean, that fire fee, people, when we look at it sometimes, add it on top of the taxes, we wanna make sure that those folks that we serve, our senior citizens and folks that are ill and stuff are able to keep their homes. We don't want anybody to be where they leave their homes. I was solely didn't have that many hardship cases that came in this year. And I wanna make sure that when we look at our budget for this nature, that we make sure we consider what we can do if it's possible.
And I think that that's the purpose of the fire fee, is the fact that we're looking at the number of hardships that we have. We're looking at the fact that we have the eleventh highest millet rate in the state of Florida prior to the reduction, and we're looking at ways that we can logically provide some relief to people who are paying high taxes. And I think the easiest, really, one of the only solutions we had at that time was the fire fee because it gave us absolute control of, on an annual basis, of how we reduce that, how we logically reduce the millet rate and fund it to service. And that's what we're looking at doing, and doing it in an equitable manner so that there is reprieve for everyone.
And I know, most people don't know that, about fifty-one or fifty-two percent of the population that pay ad valorem taxes are carrying the burden of the cities, what the city needs in budget to take care of everybody.
And in summation of what has been, I mean, what happened in the past, we, some of the non, about five oh one three Cs and some of the other nonprofits, they have also been incorporated in order to help defray some of the costs from the fifty-one percent that have been paying all along. So, it kinda helps spread out things a little bit more equitably, and we have not hit those entities with the full rate. So, again, we're assessing it every year, we're not where we need to be, and we just, I think we need to do that for the city.
I mean, I think everyone forgets that we were on the verge of bankruptcy. And I think that's probably the most critical piece of this whole puzzle. We were on the verge of bankruptcy, and if you recall those meetings that we had, I think the most profound statement made was that everybody needs to have some skin again. You know, I don't think the conversation would be as prolonged, I don't think we would have as many people who would be upset if we had merely raised the millet rate as everyone else had done historically. But because we've creatively tried to use the tools that are in the toolbox in order to provide relief over time. It's not immediate relief, because we didn't get in this situation right away, but it was plausible that everyone would pay a higher rate the first year and by the second year, that everyone would see a reduction from the baseline of where we started. And where we are right now, based upon the numbers, how far are we off right now, Mr. Reynolds?
Based on what we budgeted?
Yes, sir.
We've actually relegated a little bit more than what we budgeted. Twelve dollars.
We've collected what we've collected, what we budgeted plus. And so, it puts us in a position where now, we can look at providing additional relief to citizens. And that, and I think the uniform collection method puts us in the like most favorable to be able to do that and have the compliance that we have as it relates to yearly payments of ad valorem taxes. And again, we still have our processes in place which provide relief. And so, those reliefs don't stop, the hardships don't stop, all the processes that we had in place are still there. And so, at the end of the day, I just wanna see if we have the same conversation when your taxes go down.
I guess my, I guess my question was not about the overall fee, I guess we've relegated to a point that we're in, the fees there, we understand that. Just, my comments is based on the comments the young lady made concerning her mortgage. And just wanted to know, was there any opportunity within, whether it be hardships or whatever, is there any opportunity to give her some relief, to make it more palatable for her to make her payments, being that it's tied to her bank mortgage?
She does have the opportunity, if it becomes a hardship, to apply through the city, through the city manager and our friends. If it provides a hardship for her.
If it provides a hardship, it still has to be paid.
Understanding.
But it still has to be paid.
It can be deferred.
But if you're budgeting and you're able to have quarterly pay, yes. I actually think the quarterly payment seem to be more plausible than five months to pay that we had, based upon what was in place before. If you got quarterly payments, then all you're doing is budgeting X amount of dollars per month towards that and making the payments every quarter. Whether you pay the mortgage company or you pay, or you come to City Hall and make the payment, it's still, it's the same process, it's the same money.
Would it also depend on what taxes too, that the school board and water land district and the county?
Our calculations have nothing to do with anybody but us.
But y'all have to pay that tax, I mean, they send you one tax bill and it's all one thing.
And we're all beholden to those entities when they set their rates, it's nothing we can do to change them. The only thing we can do as a commission is make sure that we try to do what's best for our citizens. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Brown? Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Norwood?
Yes.
Mayor Hill?
Yes. Both in passage unanimously. Moving on to item B, annual assessment resolution. You did both?
That's the resolution.
Okay. Moving on to item number six, resolution confirming Smith McCrary Architects Incorporated provides scope of work for design and construction administration of water taxi terminal building at Riverfront Park Restrooms. Mr. Griffin?
Jonathan Griffin, toll works director. As I informed you at the last meeting, the deadline for the water taxi delivery is September of this year. The biggest outstanding scope component is the construction of the water taxi terminal and restroom building. We have an approved contract with Smith McCrary Architects, it's already gone through procurement review with FDOT and FHWA. I reached back out to them, they have given you an alternative scope of work to basically construct the necessary terminal and restroom building minus the restroom. And that is what's been going on tonight.
All right, well, I have a question.
Yes, sir. Can we go to read resolution first?
Yes. Mr. Griffin?
Resolution of the city of Palaca, Florida confirming Smith McCrary Architects Incorporated provides scope of work for the design and construction administration of the water taxi terminal building and Riverfront Park restroom.
Second. Move on to floor in a second.
Since he's done this restaurant, we keep everything except the restaurant, and we need to move forward a little bit, so I call for questions.
Before we call a question, let me open the public hearing. Is there anyone here for public hearing? Seeing no one here for public hearing, we'll close public hearing. Is there any discussion from the commission?
Yes, the, I saw in there where it said that the amount of the contract would not change, but the scope of the project would change based on not having the kitchen and a couple of other things in there. So, how does the price not, how does it not adjust if we're not gonna add those components?
Simply, Commissioner, because they've already done a considerable amount of work that they've been paid for. And, you know, as a result of the contract negotiations and the scope of work kind of being not definitive as it's, you know, relates to a restaurant and terminal building combined together, what's left is equal to what we'd be building, it's proportional to, it's, what's a better way of saying this? The percentage is within the range based upon the construction cost for the lesser building, based upon what's left in their scope, or left in their contract price that hasn't been expended.
Has that been spelled out? I didn't, I didn't see it in this, I didn't see it in the.
No, sir, what's left as far as construction dollars would be somewhere in the range of two hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars after the soft costs are taken out. Soft costs including permitting, geotechnical, architectural, and engineering costs. So, that leaves us somewhere in the hundred and thirty to hundred and fifty-eight dollar square foot range for the building. And I believe we have somewhere in the range of thirty to thirty-five thousand dollars left to be paid out on the current contract with Smith McCrary. So, it's within the acceptable range.
I have a question, are we gonna see any renderings of what they go through?
Yes, ma'am, we can come back with the concept, it's actually spelled out, they have to develop a concept within that scope of work and we'll be going back in front of the planning board for a certificate of progress because it does fall within the Southwestern.
Then there were some other things in there too, where it said it was gonna, you know, as a reminder, you know, future gas, water, sewer, and grease traps, all of those things gonna need to be added and I guess, is not part of that cost?
Yeah, the architect wanted to make it known that they're not doing any kind of design associated with a restaurant. So, this just involves the design and bid documents for a terminal and restroom building.
Is there gonna be any consideration for hospital expansion of a facility in the future?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, and it's actually noted as in the scope of work that there is, it will be designed in such a fashion to basically accept an expansion.
Mr. Warren?
Jonathan, did you say your date was September of this year? Now, is that for completion of the project?
That's the entire project, Mr. Mayor.
That's for completion, construction, CO issued, everything?
Yes.
You're already mid-April?
Yes.
So, in terms of your bringing back markups or drawings or whatever, and so. and so forth, you're obviously going to have to be on a pretty accelerated schedule, aren't you?
And we'll probably be requesting one final extension from FDOT and FHWA. But based upon my experience, we don't like to ask for those extensions unless we've shown progress. So we'll be on an accelerated schedule for design. And once we're shovel ready, we'll probably, you know, request an extension from FDOT because it's not feasible to think that we're going to have CO by September this year.
Okay, that was my question. If it looks not feasible, may you do?
Well, I'd like to say, ma'am, that. I'd like to see renderings before, even if we have to have a quick call meeting to, to approve of them. Because when we started doing Price Martin, we thought it was going to look like the train station. And they shimmy it along a little bit and it, I, I looked at it and to me, it would have looked much better if it had been like the train station. We had to take what we could get, but we want something that's really going to look good down there and it's something that we're going to enjoy and like. The architect needs to, to step it up for us.
Stoneboard and all, it's already been taken care of.
Yes, sir, it's already permitted. We are going through permit modification. With the CBT grant, we have approximately 11,000 or 12,000 square foot that have been purged as to reduce from the scope of work in that project. But all the buildings that are conceived are covered within that conceptual, not conceptual, but comprehensive permit that includes the private rebuild of the sites.
Any further discussion?
Please.
Questions, may I call? Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Norwood?
Yes.
Mr. Borum?
Yes.
Mayor Hill?
Motion carries unanimously.
Ma'am, can I say one, I have one more thing to ask. Since we are not having a restaurant in that building and the reason Cocky Bill pulled out because he thought they were going to have a bigger restaurant, is it possible for food group to approach them about putting a restaurant back in the golf course? If you haven't got any bites on it, get something here because we need a restaurant back in the, on the golf course at that point. I'm asking you, is that something we should look at?
Sorry, what was the question?
About potential going back with a restaurant at the golf course. If the restaurant at the, at the facility on the river is not going to be feasible. We just closed out the RFP for the, for the golf course. I just wanted you to, you know, to expound on the fact that we closed it. And we'll be going through the process of review of those RFPs.
I haven't reviewed them myself to make sure that all the documents are in there, but I believe we have four complete responses. And they're being distributed to the evaluation committee members right now.
Well, just long as, because you need to get that going too.
Yes, ma'am, we're pushing it as fast as we can.
Thank you.
Moving on to item number seven, on the agenda discussion about Sunday morning alcohol sales. And as it relates to this particular topic, this is the conversation that I wanted to have with the commission. As it relates to Sunday morning alcohol sales, I've got one speaker card, Ms. Allegra Kittens. I'll let her go ahead and speak and then we'll proceed with the discussion from there.
I'm going to have to speak after you all discussed because a lot of times you all discussed that the audience could address, would like to address, but the time's up. I just want to say that the Sunday morning, the way we have the ordinance set up right now, it has been set up for a number of years, it works and it works fine with no problem. And the county also is closing on Sunday morning. There's a difference, the county opens at noon time for sale. And we closed, we don't open until 1:00. But I would ask you to leave the ordinance, discuss it and talk about it. Don't put it on the agenda just because of the way it is. You know the problems we had with it. But if you do want to put it on the agenda, which I'm 99.9% sure you will put it on the agenda to be voted on, it's anyway. Please, one of you ask the police department to do their study like was previously done, I have a previous study that was done showing what the extra costs of the police department is in the pay hours and serving alcohol. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kittens. And so as, as we continue the conversation, and I want to have this conversation because I've, I've come across several people, several different merchants throughout this community and also citizens who have a concern as to why alcohol sales aren't permitted on Sunday morning. When you look at this particular ordinance, you're able to purchase alcohol from 7:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m. Monday through Saturday, Sunday from 1:00 p.m. until 12:00 midnight. New Year's, they're falling on a Monday through Saturday from 7:00 a.m. to 4:00 a.m. So they're extended hours for New Year's Eve. And then the New Year's Eve falls on a Sunday from 1:00 p.m. until 4:00 a.m. And so I, in looking at this, in reading in the literal portion of it, it looks as though the purpose of the restriction is based upon religious reasons as it relates to churches. Being privy to those conversations back in 2005 when this was adopted, I'm wondering if, if, if the purpose had some consideration to do with churches, then we have churches that have services on Saturday. And so are we, so is there an issue on Saturday? So why is there prohibition on Saturday? But we shouldn't be legislating morality anyway. What we should be doing is looking at the law and determining if there's a rational relationship from a health, safety, a welfare position to determine if there's a need for the prohibition. I, I think the climate in this community is far different than it was in 2005. And so I think that when we look at this overall, we have to determine from a safety perspective, does the prohibition of alcohol sales on Sunday morning provide any additional safeties than it does before? I, I think cutting alcohol sales off at 2:00 a.m., and my time's up. I think cutting alcohol sales off at 2:00 a.m. is a good thing. As it relates to what we have in place, we understand that the later we continue to have alcohol sales, there's a greater propensity to have driving and influence charges and things of that nature. But I, I'm really leery about the restriction just on Sunday when we allow morning purchases everywhere else. We've got merchants in this community who sell alcohol and that's their primary source of income. We've got other merchants who do, who sell alcohol, such as Publix and some of the other places in this community, who also sell alcohol. And we have restaurants who've indicated that they would, they would want to have simple things such as mimosa or Bloody Marys during Sunday brunch and they're limited on it. So whenever we talk about time, place, manner restrictions for the purposes from a government standpoint, then those things have to be rast related to some safety, to some safety component. I've got a listing of the DUIs that we've had since 2010. And we've got 77 DUIs since 2010. The heightened periods are always Christmas, New Year's Eve, the holidays. When I look at this report, I don't see any of those DUIs taking place during those heightened periods. And those are the times in which we have extensions on alcohol sales from 7:00 a.m. to 4:00 a.m. on New Year's Eve. We have no crashes during that period where we have any alcohol sales during that time period. And so in looking at this data, I think the conversation, there needs to be some additional collection and some reporting to see if in fact there is some restriction as it relates to, if there's some, if there's some problem outside of restriction. But if there's a safety issue as it relates to starting alcohol sales at 7:00 a.m. versus start for every day as opposed to starting alcohol sales at 1:00 p.m., which still isn't consistent with the county's ordinance. Because in the, in the second part of this is, merchants are, merchants who are within, who are situated within the city limits find themselves in a far worse position than anywhere else. Because now, an individual can go into the county and make a purchase and then come back into the city and consume. And if we're talking about safety aspects of it and we're worried about whether it's going to be an increase in DUI or alcohol-related crime, having a person purchase alcohol and drive somewhere else is probably worse than anything else we can do. If we'll have them drive further out to get to it, that's probably one of the worst things that we can do overall. But I think that there is, it isn't fair to the merchants. I don't see the logical relationship between the restriction of the date. And after practicing criminal law for 17 years, I don't recall ever having a case where I had a person who.